All good now.
I would like to call to order the Tiburon Town Council regular meeting of today's September 18th. It is a little past six thirty P M. May I have roll call and call to order? That was called to order, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nick Farr is absent. Councilmember Ryan is absent. Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thier. And Mayor Fredericks.
Here. Uh, Lee, will you give us um some information about how to submit public comment followed by oral communications, please?
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Thank you.
All right, did we cover both? How to submit public comment?
Yes, we did.
All right, is there any public comment from the room? Yes, sir, come to the mic and tell us who you are and what your concern is.
Hi, my name is Charlie Scott. I'm a senior at Redwood High School. Um, I'm here to talk about uh the upcoming measure B that will be on the ballot in November. Uh, as you may know, in March, we tried to pass measure A, which was similar to the upcoming measure B, but it was larger and we've since kind of scaled it back, made it really just the essentials. Um, but just coming from a current student at Redwood High School, I've seen uh, you know, the conditions of some of the facilities, which is the main thing that measure B seeks to address, not just at Redwood, but also at TAM, Archie Williams, uh, and you know, the whole TAM district. And so things like the cafeteria, um HVAC system, some of the roofs like literally leak in the winter when it's raining. Um, the facilities are just in desperate need of an update. And that the last bond measure that passed that was like a facilities update, which is what this bond is, um, was before I was born. It was, it was before I was born, it was about twenty years ago. So it's like long overdue for for an upgrade. And this is our chance to do it because if we don't pass it this time, I believe we have to wait another two years until we have a chance to pass it again. Um, so it's essential, we were half a percentage point away from passing it uh in the spring. So we just really need that little bit and, you know, I'm a senior. So any of the upgrades that are going to come of this bond aren't going to affect me at all. It's going to affect, you know, the next ten, fifteen, twenty years of Redwood students before, you know, the next one inevitably comes around. So for any parents who, you know, have kids at Reed School right down the road, that it's their kids who are going to be affected. So, you know, all the parents of kids who have kids in the feeder schools and honestly, anyone who owns property in the district should really consider voting yes on the bond because it's going to raise property values and it's going to make your kid, your kid's high school experience that much better. Um, so just coming from a student who's seen the dilapidated state of the buildings, who's seen when it's raining out kids sitting on the floor of the hallway eating lunch. Um, it's time for an upgrade and our chance to make that upgrade is is now in November, we're going to vote on the bond. Hopefully it passes, yes, on measure B. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you for the update on measure B.
Thank you so much, thank you for coming out.
Thanks.
Is there any further public comment? Any online?
Seeing none online.
Uh, then we'll move on now to the consent calendar. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar items? Seeing none, would any member of the council like to pull off an item from consent? I am seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, yes.
And let it be noted for the record uh that council member Isaac Nick Farr is now present also. We move now to action items, the first, the Richardson Bay Sanitation District Pond Closure Project. Is there a staff report?
Madam, madam mayor, uh, members of the council and and the public, uh, this project is the Richardson Bay Sanitary District Closure Project. So this evening, the summary here, our town staff is recommending that town council authorized the town manager to approve the award of contract for the RBSD Pond Closure Project to West Rock Engineering for two hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. And also authorized the town manager to approve the construction contract change orders up to ten percent of the construction contract amount for unforeseen construction issues, to authorize the town manager to approve the construction management services contract with E K I in the amount of thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars for the pond, RBSD ponds closure project report that will be submitted to the state. And also authorize a fiscal year budget amendment in the amount of a hundred sixteen dollars, eight hundred twenty-six, uh, one hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars to fund a project with the funds derived from two different sources. The first would be the RBSD Reserve Fund, Fund One Eighty-Two, in the amount of one hundred one thousand nine hundred forty-three, and the second being the general fund operating reserves in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars. Little background on this project. In twenty twenty-four, after several years of effort, the town completed the acquisition of the portion of the property owned by Richardson Bay Sanitary District, the Four Ponds. As part of the agreement to acquire the property, the town agreed to cover the cost of design and implementing a project that would satisfy the requirements of the state-approved closure plan uh for the property. And then also the final design bid uh documents provide uh two project alternatives. Uh, we have a base bid, alternative one. This base bid version of the project consists of de-watering the ponds if necessary. The ponds are currently dry right now. Remove the existing wastewater pond piping and structures. Remove removal of the retaining walls and fence and placing and compacting clean fill within the ponds. Smooth grading the entire area and installation of a storm drain infrastructure and related items of work as required for the project to be completed. So in summary, this version would result in the entire project being graded with a gentle slope and the existing fencing and retaining walls removed. The alternate bid that we uh that the consultant put together for us wa- consisted of de-watering the ponds again if necessary, removing any existing wastewater pond piping and structures, placing and compacting and grading clean fill within the pond depression only. So there's no grading involved here, we just fill the ponds. And installation of storm drain infrastructure and related items. So in summary, this version of the alternate bid would be just filling in the ponds with dirt up to the uh level surface that they are at now, the top of the surface of the pond. And then also it would involve removing the barbed wire fence, but the retaining walls and the fencing within the area would would stay there. Both, both of the alternate bids, base bid and the alternate bid, they both have additive bid items. One of them is to provide a pricing to install a small paved section of access road area for RBSD-owned property adjacent to the town-owned parcel. This way, RBSD can use that area to access the side of their building and some force means that they have out there. And if they find this uh bid acceptable, they would pay for it and enter into a separate contract with West Rock Engineering. And the second uh al- alternative bid included palate- a price to palletize the individual concrete blocks that were used as the retaining walls. And this way we can uh see, you know, use them for a project in the in the future and or sell them. Um, it's just an alternative to simply demolishing the walls and disposing them. So below is here the engineer's opinion or probable cost. For the base bid, our engineer consultant came up with a base bid of three hundred forty-eight thousand five dollars. And for the additive uh bid item number nine for the access road for RBSD, nineteen thousand and to palletized existing walls, five thousand. For the alternate bid, um, the price was a little cheaper at uh three hundred thirty-two thousand. Uh, but the access road climbed up a little bit to forty-three thousand and the pallet- palletizing the walls was a little cheaper at two thousand five because we're leaving the walls in place along the access road that goes up to McKeeny Green. And the reason why um the alternate bid was a little lower. What we were going to do is uh bring in some additional fill and not do any grading, which saved them some money. And that was the uh engineer's opinion on the on the two different bids. So below, uh, the project was put out to bid on August nineteenth, bids were publicly open on September fifth. Uh, these are the bids that came in from West Rock Engineering, who's the parent low bidder. Uh, the base bid came in at two hundred eighty-two thousand three seventy-five, the access road at forty thousand, which would be covered by Richardson Bay Sanitary District in a separate contract with them. And then to palletize the existing retaining walls, two thousand dollars, great deal on that. The alternate bid came in at two hundred forty-six thousand um with the access road at a hundred thousand and uh palletizing the existing retaining walls at two thousand. And the reason why the access road is so expensive here is because of additional grading. They'd have to remove a lot of that dirt next to the ponds to get the road to the same level as RBSD parking lot. So there's more work involved on that uh alternative bid. Our second bid that came in was from Major Gilati. Their base bid came in at three hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred, access road thirty thousand, palletizing uh the retaining wall seventeen thousand seven hundred. The alternate bid from them was uh five hundred and three hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred, access road sixty-five thousand and palletizing the existing retaining wall, eight thousand. So staff reviewed the bid submitted by West Rock Engineering and we have determined that they have a valid contractor's license. They have submitted all required forms, there are no bid irregularities, that they're the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Their bid is below the engineer's estimate by forty-seven thousand six hundred thirty dollars, about twelve percent. And the difference between the low bidder and the second low bidder is about twenty-three percent. Staff is recommending the council authorize the town manager also to approve change orders, not to exceed ten percent of the contract amount to address any unforeseen construction issues. Uh, we had a mandatory site visit there with all of the uh uh contractors that put in a bid uh to go over all structures and anything and everything that they saw out there. So uh I don't see if any many or if any change orders coming our way because it was a mandatory site visit out there.
Good evening.
So with the closure project, the town solicited pricing on two alternative projects as I described above. And this was in hopes that the alternate bid scenario would result in a significantly lower cost project for town council to consider. So the alternate bid pricing would provide a reduction in cost of thirty-six thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars, a little over twelve point eight percent. And proceeding with the lower cost alter- uh lower cost alternate bid would satisfy the requirements of the state-approved closure plan. However, the property would visually remain similar to how it looks today. Given the base bid project would significantly improve aesthetics of the property and the increase in cost is modest, staff is recommending town council award the base bid and additive bid item number ten palletizing the uh wall totaling two hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. And Richardson Bay Sanitary District will contract separately with West Rock Engineering to complete and pay for additive bid item number nine located on their property. Uh, staff is also recommending council authorize the town manager to approve a contract with E K I Environmental and Water in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars for construction management services. And this also includes preparation of the final closure documentation for the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This way they can officially close uh the ponds out there. This is the last step that they need, the paperwork from them. And staff will be doing the construction management, so that again i- is their total price. We don't anticipate uh using any or much of that, only to prepare the final documents. So the C I P budget, uh fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, C I P plan includes tw- already includes two hundred fifty thousand dollars for this project. If council chooses to approve this project, uh recommend authorize a fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment in the amount of a hundred thirteen thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars with sources of funds coming from two different sources. One being the RBSD Reserve Fund in the amount of a hundred one thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and the second being the general fund operating reserve in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars. And again, the recommendations this evening, one authorize the town manager to approve the award of contract of the RS- RBSD Pond Closure Project to West Rock Engineering for two hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Authorize the town manager to approve construction contract change orders up to ten percent of the construction contract amount for unforeseen construction issues. And authorize the town manager to approve the construction management services contract for E K I in the amount of thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars for the RBSD Pond Closure Project. And authorize a fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget amendment in the amount of a hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars to fund a project with funds derived from two sources. The first would be the R- RBSD Reserve Fund, Fund One Eighty-Two, in the amount of hundred one thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars. And the second being the general fund operating reserve in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars. And I'm available for any questions at this time.
So I I do have a question, it was my understanding that one of the two bids, uh, in fact, I think, and I'm asking you to confirm it, the one that was cheaper uh would actually import off-site fill. Does the more expensive one do that also?
Uh, the more expensive one will do that as well, both of them.
Both of them do that, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so I had a question, thank you for that presentation, uh David, that was fantastic. Um, so there was some talk in the public about um, you know, why do we have to fill in the ponds? If we might make this a volleyball court or something that the public might want in the future. I know several years ago I asked the question and I was told that uh we are required to follow the closure plan and decommission this plant by state regulation. And then after that, the community can decide what they want there. But we can't, in its present condition, put anything on top of it until the state approves the closure. And these are the steps that we have to follow. Could you confirm that?
That is correct, so right now it's still an open, open permit and it needs to be closed. And just so that the public and town council, the permit is under RBSD's name. So they will have an open permit until these ponds are fully decommissioned.
And then the follow-up question that I got was uh, uh, someone asked if there was a variance possible to the state. Uh, I said there was not, there's no process for a variance when you're talking about decommissioning uh a sewage treatment plant, but could you also clarify that for the public from staff as well?
Yeah, so as far as a variance, we are given a lot, we are given a set time to close this project. They're they're not giving us a full closure final date to do it, but we do have uh some issues that may arise if we don't close it as soon as possible. One being for sure, construction cost will go up. Two, um, the legalities with an open permit with RBSD, we don't know what that will ha- what will happen to that. And three, the possibility of real wet winters and water coming in and a federally recognized endangered species calls that place home. Now you have another problem there because it it would create a whole new permit to go through.
Great, and I had one remaining question. Um, the access road for paving RBSD, um, I did not find it on the plans. Um, and since my computer seems to be talking on its own, I'm not going to open it again for a while. Maybe uh it'll calm down. But um, is the access road, is that an easement over the property that we will own? Or is that totally on RBSD's own property?
Yeah, that is totally on their property, so it would be from the new property line where we start owning to their existing building and parking lot.
But it is an easement?
No easement, it is their property.
Why, why is it an additive to this bid? Why aren't they doing their own bid?
Um, they just thought it'd be advantageous for them to have a contractor there already and be a lot cheaper for them for us to go out to bid.
Okay, so I assume the town has entered into some kind of an M O U and uh with RBSD and gotten their insurance as well.
Yeah.
To cover the cost of of, to cover that portion of the project since we're technically, it's not our, on our land.
Correct, so RBSD uh will have a separate construction agreement with uh West Rock Engineering. It would not go through the town or we would not pay uh West Rock Engineering and get reimbursed from the district. They would have their own separate contract.
Perfect, so they'll be paying them directly with their own insurance policies. Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
And and just one follow-up question, um, the West Rock Engineering uh project as it's described uh really doesn't uh preclude any future use that might be possibly considered uh any more than the alternative bid would. Is that right?
So, so the fir- the West Rock, uh, they provided us with two bids, one being with the gentle slope, the grading, removing the fence. The, and this also includes hydroseeding, so they're going to hydroseed the whole, the whole uh property. Uh, the alternate bid would be just filling in the ponds and nothing else, the fence would stay up.
And my question was because we've been receiving emails about uh changing or delaying this project to convert to a sand uh volleyball court. But if we go ahead with this project and go forward with meeting the state requirements um and do the uh recommended remediation that the ta- town staff is recommending, that does not preclude a future use?
Not at all.
Not at all.
This will get, this will give you a clean slate for all of the future projects that may arise from the, once you adopt the uh Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you.
If I made a madam mayor, I would simply add, it not only doesn't preclude it, it's actually a prerequisite for a future use.
Thank you, any further questions?
Uh, yeah, just had a quick, quick question about the numbers. Um, so two eighty, I see two eighty-four in the um, in the staff report, I see two eighty-two up here. Um, there's a, an additional amount of one sixteen for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. But if I, if I do the sort of back of the napkin of of two eighty-four plus thirty-five thousand plus um a ten percent buffer, that gets me to three fifty, um, which is less than two hundred fifty K plus a hundred and sixteen K. So can you help me make the numbers make sense?
Yeah, the, the other, the missing amount is the preliminary, additional preliminary engineering that we have already paid for, the fifteen thousand two fifty-one.
Okay.
Uh, at the top, uh, we had to do some additional engineering work to get these plans completed.
Okay, so the, the total cost for this with a ten percent buffer is uh
Three sixty-three.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, any further questions? I am seeing none, is there public comment on this item? Yes.
Bring back the slide that's got the um al- uh base and the alternate one, the total prices. Great. Um, hi, this, I'm Andrew Thompson. Uh, yeah, Colin Crawford's letter came out of a discussion we were having. And uh, so he sent it off, I said before commenting, I I called Greg and got some background. I totally understand you, it needs to be closed, quote, closed for, because it's a sanitary facility and that makes sense. Um, what, essentially what set off alarm bells for me is, you know, in all my construction experience, who wants to pay for something twice? You know, and I just saw all this work going into grading when and filling when there's taco pools, there's talks of other things. Are we just then going to have to regrade it all over again? You know, who wants to pay for things twice? Obviously, nobody does. Um, I thought alternate B, the alter bid would be significantly lower. So, you know, in the base bid, the forty thousand is sanitation district's paying for it, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the access road, the hundred thousand, the alternate bid, the sanitation department's paying for it, right?
If, if they decide to go a hundred thousand, this, since it's on their property, it will not affect us.
You guys are making the decision as if you're paying for it. The forty thousand, the hundred thousand should be out of that equation.
It is.
It is, so we're talking about the two eighty-two and the two forty-six, Andrew.
Right.
So we're not talking about the forty or the hundred.
We've ignored the forty and the hundred.
We're just talking about the base bid.
Okay, I'm looking at a forty thou- twenty thousand difference there.
No, we've, we're not, we're not considering that in the low bid.
Okay, thank God.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Then the other thing is, um, essentially, and I wrote this in my website like several weeks ago, is it just, we've got that spot there, can we, as low as cost possible? How can we just play with those nice four sections? Get, and the first one closest to McKeeny, that would easily handle a volleyball court, a sand volleyball court right away. Doesn't have to be the permanent decision, but it's a great way to experiment. People could have fun, see how much demand there is. The second one could actually handle two courts. Um, I read next door all the time. Um, my little tiny dog got bit taxed by the really big bug at the dog park. There's little tiny dog lots now, one of those could even be that. And again, this is really low impact, low preparation. See how things go, you learn a lot instead of making decisions in the abstract here behind a counter, uh, behind a dais. The other thing is, some of those are really deep. The third, the third one from McKeeny is really quite deep. And, you know, we're talking about a lot of pools that's been mentioned a lot, granted, that would be way out there. But then again, you're going to then fill just to dig deep again. And I understand it needs to be quote closed, it's just trying to figure out a way of not paying this, these costs twice. There's any way around that, I would, I, but I guess you're going to go forward with something, but can we set up something on a temporary basis to play around and explain? We've got four areas there, we can do volleyball courts and everything and just see how the community enjoys it.
Thank you, uh, would you wrap up your time, so thank you for your comments, is there any further public comment?
Hi, Carolyn Shetan, I think that uh the staff has done a great job. I am an engineer and and their analysis and having to deal with the state restrictions is something that is not easy. Um, as they probably already know. So I think that um this should be approved and we should move forward. And all of those other items having to do with volleyball courts and dog parks or whatever is something that can be decided, but if you don't take this first step, you're not even going to get there. And that's my opinion.
Thank you, Carolyn, is there any further public comment on this item? I am seeing it none, I'll bring it back to the council before just
We do have them on the online.
Sorry.
Yes, I will recognize Rob.
Uh, hi, uh, my, my name is Robert Paul and I am a Tiburon resident. I spoke at the, the August twenty-first town council meeting in support of actually making beach volleyball courts a high priority addition to the town uh Parks and Recreation Plan. I, I've listened to the comments tonight and while I'm not an expert on state regulations about closing the site, Andrew Thompson's comments about paying for something twice and taking advantage of a unique opportunity here really resonated with me. So I'm going to take the next, you know, two, two minutes and thirty seconds to read my comments anyway, which uh at the start were, were the following, I mean, related to this Richardson Bay Sanitation District Pond Closure Project, I was told about the creative and practical suggestion posted on Nextdoor today that suggested making these temporary beach volleyball courts. And I think that this is not only a fantastic idea, but it'd be a great litmus test to see truly how popular beach volleyball is in Tiburon. And rather than filling them with dirt, you have a unique opportunity to respond to the growing local interest from kids and adults in beach volleyball. I'm not going to reiterate all the reasons why having these would be a good thing for Tiburon, but I will say since my August twenty-first comments, there's been a significant ground swell in support of beach volleyball here in Tiburon. My twelve-year-old daughter and I, together with other motivated parents, people like Matt Hart, who have spent a lot of time in this, kids, other Tiburon residents have been collecting signatures for making beach volleyball a high priority formal part of the master plan. Will present that to you in a future meeting. But this suggestion of actually taking the sanitation district ponds into temporary beach volleyball courts, I think is a really practical suggestion that would actually be probably pretty economical for the town uh and would be beloved by the local community. So I appreciate you taking that suggestion seriously and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for the comment, is there any further public comment?
Seeing none.
I bring it back to the council now for discussion.
Uh, great, I
Or a motion?
Someone want to start or?
I'm, I'm prepared to speak whenever there's a, an opportunity.
A lull, a lull in the speakers, okay, I'll, I'll start, I'll start. So I want to say to the public and our um So I want to say to the public and our, um, the members who are here and the members online that, um, this has been a 10-year effort. I am thrilled, thrilled that we are at the moment where we have acquired these ponds for public space and we are moving in the direction of closing these ponds. Now I want to let you know that I have checked over the years and I have checked again. Is there a way that we could just convert this into volleyball courts, a pool, into whatever the community decides that they want there? It doesn't make sense to fill it in and then dig it out for a pool? No. Does it make sense to do that for sand volleyball courts? No. But the state of California requires that these ponds be closed and decommissioned. This is a sewage treatment plant. This is not, uh, a public park that was in existence and we're just trying to make it difficult to do something next. So I get that there's, you know, a lot going on right now in Tiburon, but the reality is, is that we have to comply with the state law and regulations so that the community can come and through our master parks planning process, we've been doing that work. The community can say, what do we want here? And then we can make that happen. So I just want to make sure the public really understands that the town council has to follow the state law. And if we don't follow the state law, we can never do anything with that site and we may lose it. I don't know how long the regulators will wait. So I just want to say that I am going to vote in favor of this. I think our, um, I think David Eschew and our town staff did a phenomenal job in getting a low bid. I've seen the construction documents. I think it's great that you're, we're also helping out Richardson Bay Sanitation District by joining in with the same contractor. Uh, I think that also helps us. And, um, I just want to make sure that the public knows that this is an exciting moment. We are going to acquire after this is done. At minimum, it's going to be open space. And at maximum, we are going to dream together and we are going to decide what comes here next. And there's a, a million good ideas that I've seen through the, through the, uh, parks master planning process, but the community will decide. So I'm going to move to support.
And I will second that.
I just also want to comment. Um, so, I am very excited tonight. I want to thank staff, uh, uh, and fellow council members for the efforts over many years to acquire this. Um, I think, this is, this is one of the missing longstanding missing pieces in, perfecting our beautiful waterfront park. It's been a dream of many of us for many years and it's exciting to see it come to fruition. And I think, um, I guess what I would say to, to folks who see a use for it that they think is, would be great. I think, you know, over the years, from where we sit, we've seen a lot of people excited about a lot of specific projects that they like in, in the park. And we set about this master plan process in order to create order from chaos, figure out what the community's priorities are. Uh, we hear loud and clear that, uh, beach volleyball is one of them. But we need to, uh, be thoughtful and plan it out and proceed with the master plan process so that everyone is heard and so that what we put in our beautiful, you know, front, front space or front lawn, uh, is, uh, something that is great for all of us and satisfies everyone. So I think that, uh, either slowing down the cleanup to wait, uh, for a project, I, I think that's dangerous and makes no sense. And rushing to build something in there without honoring the process that we've started to hear from everybody and come up with a great plan for our waterfront also makes no sense. I think the best thing that we can do is complete our process, taking over the site, cleaning it up, making it beautiful. And when the master plan process is complete and we're able to entertain, you know, to make our decisions about where everything needs to go in the waterfront, we'll be excited and happy to do it. And this, this area will be a key part of that and it'll be ready for us. So I'm very excited and I want to again thank, um, staff for bringing this to closure.
Um, I would like to add to the comments to thank the staff too. I know that, uh, when the grand jury report came out in 2014, looking at consolidating the sanitary districts, among us, there was a lot of informal buzz because there was nothing on the agenda or contemplated. That it was very weird to have another agency own a chunk of land and assets within the middle of one of our priority parks. We have gone so far with great ideas and I agree, we, we need to do it within the confines of the planning where we look at the priority uses, the capability of the sites to accommodate the recreation uses and which sites can best maintain the use. Right now, we're just on the step where we acquire the first chunk. It has many proposed uses and I think we should focus on passing the motion that is on the table and the second, but first I think we need to let Councilmember Nick Farr talk.
Thank you very much, um, Mayor Fredericks. I, I think I would echo my fellow councilmen's thoughts. This is a big deal. Um, and this has been happening for a long time. And thank you to town staff for, uh, for negotiating and bringing this across the goal line. I also think, um, you know, I, I think I'd like to thank the public for, for also pitching in and giving our, giving their feedback. And I look forward to the, you know, beach volleyball as a project, along with many other projects coming out of the Parks Master Plan. I think this, uh, like, you know, like many other things that come bef, came before me when I was a Parks Commissioner, as well as, as have come before Town Council. You know, there are, there are areas where the state of California has regulations. And I think it's important that, um, that we all get educated and understand how the processes work for decommissioning, um, decommissioning land. Housing was one that we all got educated on about the last three or four years, where we really don't have a lot of control around, around how these things are decommissioned. We don't have a lot of control around how we're rezoning, um, at the local level. It's really coming down from the state and I'm not in favor of that. I don't want to pay for something twice. But I also, I don't agree with the suggestion that was made by some today that the town staff is not doing their own due diligence and is, you know, setting us up for potentially paying for something twice. I think that my trust is, is in town staff and I think they're doing the best that they can. I also wouldn't want to jump through the processes that we've done over the last year with the Parks Master Plan and suggest that the Tiburon, uh, Reed Heights Tiburon Knowles Neighborhood shouldn't have a voice in this process and shouldn't be a part of that and shouldn't be able to say, um, you know, what they're interested in doing with that area. We had three, um, three, three people, three residents from that neighborhood write in tonight and talk about, about their thoughts and their ideas, which, which, uh, which I think are very valuable and I, I appreciate that, uh, that input. So, um, with that said, you know, I think I would also, um, you know, based on the information tonight, I think it makes sense for us to, uh, to move forward with the process.
So then I would like to call for a vote.
Mayor, before we take call for a vote, I just want to verify, uh, Council Vice Mayor Thier said she supported the motion to support the project. Just to be clear on the record, the motion is to approve all four recommendations as stated in the staff report?
Yes, it is. And there was a second.
My second was based on that understanding. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously and we can still look forward to what the ultimate use of these sites will be. Move on now to public hearing on 15 Turtle Rock Court. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. Janie Alseb will, um, provide a staff report tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fredericks and members of the town council. This, uh, this project that I'm presenting this evening is, uh, for 15 Turtle Rock Court. It is a precise development plan amendment. And the purpose of the amendment is to modify the approved building envelope that was approved as part of the original precise development plan, the Perini Phase Two Development Plan back in 1988. So the slide here shows the project location. This amendment, by the way, is for just one specific lot, Lot 19 within the subdivision. And again, the purpose of the, um, the amendment is to modify the building envelope. And, uh, based on the information provided by the applicant, the purpose, uh, ultimately is to be able to construct some, some, um, improvements in, um, on the property, including a swimming pool that would also require some other improvements and to improve overall site circulation and to address some of the, um, non-conformities on the site as outlined in the staff report. There we go. I did. Thank you.
If we can, I want to take a quick break before you continue on with your staff report. Just a two-minute recess.
Very good.
What's the interest issue?
What?
Mayor, we can proceed.
Are we ready to reconvene? I would like to reconvene, uh, this evening's town council meeting. And we can pick up where we left off. If anyone remembers where that is, I believe it's the staff report.
Very good. So where we left off is, uh, where we, um, talk about the Planning Commission's role in this, um, in this project review. As is customary for any, um, plan development amendments. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for this application on June 26th of this year. And the Planning Commission considered all of the potential impacts as well as letters of support from the neighbors and, uh, from the owners of the, of the property. The Planning Commission also considered a request by the applicant's attorney to remove condition four from the proposed conditions of approval, which restates a condition in the original Perini Phase Two subdivision and precise development plan. I believe that the applicant's representative is here this evening and will address that as part of his presentation. And I don't plan to go on it in detail as part of this presentation, but staff is happy to, um, respond to any questions that the, the council has. But I think it's worth noting that that's something that will, uh, probably warrant some further discussion. The Planning Commission ultimately voted, uh, to, uh, recommend, uh, to the town council approval of the proposed precise development, uh, plan amendment. And this again is to amend the building envelope for a specific lot at 15 Turtle Rock Court, subject to conditions that were included in both the Planning Commission's, uh, resolution and also, uh, repeated in the draft resolution that is before the town council this evening. Yes, that's good. That's good. That's good. I think we can work with that. So the arrow points to the subject property, which is at 15 Turtle Rock Court. And as I mentioned before, the, the overall purpose of, uh, the applicant seeking this amendment is so that they can, move, excuse me, construct certain improvements in areas that are appropriate for site development. Yep. Yep. This, the, these are photographs of, of, uh, areas of the property. And as outlined in the staff report, uh, there are existing non-conformities that would be corrected as part of this amendment specifically. There is an existing, uh, sport court, uh, that I believe was, uh, installed prior to the current owner, uh, having the property. It actually extends into an open space easement and, um, the applicant is part of their proposal has indicated that they are willing to remove this encroachment into the open space area. Staff has included that as a condition of approval also, just to ensure that it, it is, um, followed through on. So there is open space that, uh, actually abuts the, the rear of the property. And I should note that this building envelope change does not increase the size of the building envelope. It doesn't change the size of the lot. It merely repositions the building envelope. It takes a certain amount of square footage away from certain areas and, uh, relocates it into other areas on the property. So there is no net increase in the building envelope size and there's absolutely no increase in the, in the size of the, the lot itself. So that I think that's an important point to note. There we go. Okay, so this, yeah, this would be good to have a pointer, but I can outline for you perhaps somehow, where the, uh, the existing building envelope is. And actually, I, I just thought of this. The applicant, the applicant has a much better slide of this, I believe. It's color coded. So we, we can maybe, um, offer to put that up, um, for future discussion. But yeah, go ahead if you want, or I can.
What I'm going to show you is the original dotted line for the building envelope with my shaky hand here, but here we go. And then these areas here will be part of the reconfiguration. So we're taking an area from here, we're taking this area up here, placing them here.
Right. So essentially what Dina just outlined, up in the upper right portion of the, of the lot currently, there's an area that's within the building envelope that's really not, it's not utilized and it's not really all that suited for much. So the proposal is to relocate that portion of the building envelope to the, what I would consider the rear of the property so that it is in a location where it would allow, uh, suitable improvements to occur on the site. Oh, yeah.
Go back to that slide. The existing proposal?
I believe it's an exhibit in your staff report as well. Yeah, that might be easier to see. This is not a great visual.
There, there is one, I believe, in, again, in the applicant's presentation. If there are any questions, we'll, we'll make sure that we, we address that. It's going the other way.
Thank you. There we go.
So I will reiterate that the conditions of approval and the recommendation that the town, that, excuse me, that the planning commission recommended to the town council is exactly the same as what staff is recommending to the town council. There have been no changes in the conditions of approval that are recommended at this point. Again, I believe the applicant will, will address what their, their views are on that subject, but the, what is, what staff is recommending to the town council is entirely consistent with what the planning commission, planning commission recommendation is. There was discussion about condition four. It is reflected in the planning commission minutes and also covered in the staff report. And staff recommends that the town council hold the public hearing on the item and consider the testimony that is presented tonight and also adopt the draft resolution approving the precise development plan amendment, subject to the conditions that are contained in your exhibit one, which is the draft resolution. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
I, I understand that the applicant is going to talk about a condition four, but can you remind me, did the planning commission approve removal of condition four?
The planning commission did not approve or recommend removal of condition four. There was discussion at that meeting, and the ultimate conclusion would, was that it was appropriate to, to include condition four because it made clear and reiterated what was in the original precise development plan. And so that, that is what ultimately the planning commission did, did recommend.
And, and so we're, are we in a position to actually approve removal of this condition? Or would we just refer to another body for the decision?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I will say, I, I will defer to Dina on that.
Yes, you do. You, you can decide to remove that if you wish. Thank you. I just didn't know the process. We just, we just brought forward to you what the planning commission recommended. We did not want to alter that and did not feel that was within our authority to alter it, but it is within your authority to alter it, that condition of approval. And if we alter it, does it alter the requirement of that condition for other properties in the Purini? No. No, it does not. Okay. Any further questions of staff? Is there any public comment?
Seeing none.
All right. What is the process here? I'm sorry. Does the applicant make a presentation to us?
The applicant make.
Yeah, we're going to open the public hearing, and then the applicant has the opportunity to provide 10 minutes. My memory is correct, I'm asking Lee to verify that our hearing requirements.
All right, I will open the public hearing at this time. Is that right?
Yes.
And we will entertain any comments from the applicant.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Skelton, and it's my honor to present this evening on behalf of the bakers who unfortunately were not able to be here after, after the prior continuance, but they're with us in spirit. Thank you to staff. This has been a long road, and it reminds me a little bit about the prior hearing where we talked about process. And so that really is at the core of why we're here tonight. Process started with a preliminary meeting with staff and talking through program goals as well as how it relates to the municipal code and the local development standards. A question that often comes up is, why not just, you know, go forward with your, you know, site plan, design review project and apply for a variance or some other exception that may be permitted under the town's code? And again, it boomerangs back to process. We are bringing this application, which I think is pretty unique for the council. I don't think you see a lot of precise development plan amendments, in large part because there aren't that many, many of those projects around town, but we wanted to do it because we felt like it was the right thing to do, that it paves the way for managing future expectations, both for the bakers and frankly for reiterating within this unique community. So I want to show you here, this is the existing building envelope, and the area of likely development, whether it's an accessory dwelling unit, an extension of the house, or other significant improvements are up here in the, in the upper corner. It's in close proximity to the roadway. It'd be in the line of sight for upslope adjacent neighbors, and is generally one of the more impactful places on the property. Staff points out that the design of the amended building envelope was quite conscientious. It is a net neutral adjustment, meaning we're not asking for any more square footage permitted under the building envelope. We're just shifting where that square footage can be allocated. And so, you know, through this rather crude geometric diagram, you can see we're taking approximately this area in the upper corner, and we're shifting it down to the lower area. This makes sense practically if you're familiar with the area because this follows the topography, and it's the logical extension for the existing home as opposed to what might be more of a strained development in the upper corner. Staff correctly points out that, you know, one of the long-term program goals for the bakers who have three small kids is to improve the property with a pool. And so they hired a landscape architect to study that, and the logical place for the pool is down in this corner. Given the constrained building envelope, it didn't make sense. And again, we could have come forward with a variance and tried to solve on a case-by-case basis, but I, I personally didn't think that genuine variance findings could be made, and so I think this is the appropriate vehicle for doing that. Hopefully, the building envelope makes sense and is approvable in its form. You know, we went through this with the planning commission. First, we started with staff. Staff was in support. We presented the planning commission because the code, you know, the way that it's outlined demands that you go through the two-step process. I don't think the planning commission had any concerns or questions about, you know, kind of the merits of the location of the building envelope, but where we did have the robust discussion was around this condition number four. And so I want to focus this evening's commentary to that item, and it's really nuanced, and I apologize because this would probably put most people to sleep, but I find it very fascinating, and hopefully I can convince you to, to subscribe to the same. So as you look at this site plan, it shows existing conditions, and you'll notice there are a number of features that are non-conforming. The impetus for the application really have to do with the building patio, raised patio at this point, the actual building corner at this point, and an elevated circular pedestrian path at this point. Those were really the core issues for why we were shifting the, the, the area for the building envelope. But beyond that, you can see, you know, there are retaining walls here, the sports court down here, there are planter boxes and pedestrian travel here. These are all improvements. I can't, I like, I, I wish I could, you know, I dream of Jeannie wiggle my nose and make them disappear. I can't. It would make access and circulation around the property physically impossible. What the owner, and, and just to reiterate what staff had speculated on, the sports court predates the baker's ownership, and so it's, it's not of their doing. And yes, the bakers have volunteered to remediate that encroachment along with this retaining wall return up here where the pointer is, which are encroaching onto that open space parcel in connection with their future development plans. But going back to this, there are a number of other features that are physical improvements, and so I want to go back to the strict language of condition four. Condition four says that no improvements are permitted beyond the building envelope, essentially unless it's related to the driveway. And so you can tell from, from this site plan, these existing encroachment, or excuse me, these existing improvements are not directly related to the driveway. They exist on this property, and it's consistent and compatible with how the neighborhood is developed and how it's been developed over the past nearly 40 years. Again, this is, this is the location of the pool, just for a quick visual, but I want to, I want to highlight this, this condition four because it's internally inconsistent with what the municipal code says. The municipal code says that structures, so long as they are less than 42 inches in height, are permitted. And so we get into this tension about structures and improvements and these height limits. And so I want to just take it back really quickly. You can see that this, this site was developed, I think, with the understanding of the structures and the 42-inch height, height require, or height limitation, and not the strict application of zero improvements. The reason why I am raising this now, going back to processes, we started this process for this amendment with the optimistic goal of submitting a site plan design review. It would be detrimental to that site plan design review if we were to move forward with those plans only to have someone make the extreme interpretation that it includes improvements beyond the building envelope and therefore is a non-starter. Right? And so I do want to offer, by point of reference, other properties within this subdivision. I zoomed in to avoid implicating specific properties. The point here is not to show that there are a bunch of scofflaws in the neighborhood, but rather to demonstrate that this is the pattern of development within the neighborhood. Here you have retaining walls that are outside of the building envelope for that property. Again, here you have a putting green supported by retaining walls and other site improvements that certainly are improvements if you're taking a strict interpretation of that reading. Again, more landscape retaining walls and other, other features which would qualify as improvements, and this is a great example of frankly, a beautiful property. It's really well landscaped, maintained, it contributes to the natural setting, and so these are things that should not be prohibited or frowned upon, but I, I think rather supported so long as it's done in a thoughtful way that goes through a process, and, and in our case, that would be a landscape, excuse me, a site plan design review. Here again, more patio, flatwork, and, and all of these things are essentially elective. None of them are, are necessary, if you will. So I am pleading to you, and I feel a little bit like Sisyphus pushing the boulder up the hill, because staff has, has identified this issue late in the game before the planning commission process. I raised it with staff and before that hearing. Unfortunately, it, it was late, right before that hearing, so there wasn't a time to have sort of, I think, a thoughtful evaluation of it. I re-raised it immediately after that hearing, and so it's been almost three months that the town has had to live with this issue. I'm hopeful that there can be more insight and clarity, and that's what I'm asking for is essentially the town council to apply some legislative interpretation as to what it means or intends through this language. Okay? Two or three other technical points to hopefully help frame the issue. Number one, condition number four is unnecessary because it's redundant. Staff will, will confirm that it's already part of the, pardon me, 1989 or 1987 subdivision approval. It already exists on the books. We don't need to rememorialize it for this specific property when it already applies across the board. Number two, if you do apply it and adopt it just for this specific property, it, it reveals an inconsistent, an inconsistency with the existing conditions. I've already shown, there are improvements all over the property that are well outside of the existing building envelope, let alone the amended building envelope. And so with the intent of our application to bring this property into conformance with the, with the practical interpretation, like, we would have to more or less eliminate the building envelope or stretch it from, you know, property line to property line, which doesn't make sense and would provide, I think, a, a unique unfair benefit relative to the others. And then, again, I want to go back to, this property should not be uniquely conditioned relative to its other surrounding properties within this neighborhood, and I've given you just a, a couple of examples right off the bat, but hopefully you guys will appreciate Yeah, there is an inconsistency here, and even within the original conditions of approval from, from that 1980s document, I want to just point out the condition just before number 12, it was number 11, reads, I apologize, I had this flagged earlier. Here it is. It reads, "All buildings and structures shall be designed to conform to the maximum height limit set forth in the Tiburon zoning ordinance. Current, as of the date, the applicant filed its application for approval." That's the condition just before this no improvements outside of the building envelope. I think there's, you know, room for interpretation that those two are inconsistent. They're, they don't harmonize, that the, the municipal code has evolved, and it's evolved to allow these incidental site improvements up to 42 inches. So in closing, I'm respectfully requesting that the town council approve the PDP amendment, that it's reflected based on the application materials that are provided, and finally that the town council eliminate condition number four, let the historic conditions speak for themselves, and if the town council feels so willing to actually make a, a legislative interpretation regarding future application for the 42-inch height limit. Thank you very much, and I'm welcome to answer any questions if you have any.
May I ask you a question? You made a comment on condition number four is redundant. It's already in the subdivision approval. And in the face of that, I'm not quite sure what the issue is here.
Yeah.
What is the issue?
So exhibit number six in your packet is Resolution 2508, which is the town council's approval of the original subdivision. these conditions demanded that the CCNRs, the covenants, conditions and restrictions adopted for this community memorialize certain standards, and these standards are embodied in those CCNRs. They're also a condition of approval, so I believe that it's more appropriate for the local HOA to enforce their CCNRs. And, and therefore, this condition about the improvements beyond the building envelope is really a matter of, pardon me, even more localized control. We were talking about the state laws relative to the town of Tiburon, but here it's more the HOA and its interpretation of, of those CCNRs. The HOA has, has elected not to enforce this condition, and it seemingly, the town has elected not to enforce this condition based on the other examples that I gave. And so I don't quite understand or appreciate why it is being emphasized and highlighted right now for this project, other than we have submitted ourselves proactively to what I think is maybe an overly transparent process because I think it's the right thing to do. So if the town council feels as though this condition is appropriate and necessary, let it live within the 1980, pardon me, 1989 original approval. It doesn't need to be resurrected and reapplied only to this property. This condition has never been readopted or reincorporated into any of the other design review applications for any of the other applicants within this, this neighborhood or subdivision. So that's, I think, fundamentally where I just, I don't agree with condition number four, and I don't quite understand why it's being thrust upon this application.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Sort of. Does anyone else have a question? The next question I have, I would like to direct staff, but thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely.
Mayor, if I may, if there's, if you close the public hearing before you start asking questions of staff.
I'll control myself. Is there any further, is there any further questions? Any further comment from the public? Is there anyone online?
Seeing none.
I, you look very ready, so, and please help me, whoever.
I'm very ready.
Anyone who can answer, please remind me why it is that the planning commission did not approve condition number four.
They did. Why they didn't remove it, you mean?
Why they didn't.
Why they didn't remove it.
Why they did not approve the removal of condition four.
They actually didn't see the necessity for it. They felt that it was appropriate to place it here so that it would be in front of planners when when this development comes for review. They also didn't have a problem with it being redundant to the conditions of approval that are set forth within the plan development. And so they have applied it also. In 163 Avanita Miraflores, we did an identical type of condition. So it is standard when we're looking at plan developments, and we're bringing them forward for any amendments, that we bring a condition forward. So people understand that within this change or within this modification of the building envelope, we're not adding any ability to do anything different that was originally approved of the plan development. So that that's really why this is still here.
So there is an opportunity, were the applicants so inclined to have applied separately, to have whatever these walls or improvements that are foreclosed under condition number four, they could have done that.
If I may, the new argument tonight that we've heard for the first time is not the redundancy argument, which is what the planning commission dealt with. It was that these improvements should be legalized outside the building envelope. And that's a different argument that the planning commission did not consider. And that's an argument that council raised tonight. So that that's not a redundancy issue. That's an issue of what improvement should be inside the building envelope and what improvement should be allowed outside the building envelope. If the applicant wished to draw the, you know, present to the town a different building envelope to encompass those improvements, they could have chosen that path. But they decided to do a net square foot same amount. And now we're saying that we should also apparently amend the conditions of approval to articulate what is allowed and what's not allowed in the building envelope.
Okay, so I I have a follow up question on that. So if we were to do that, then in essence, aren't we changing the precise development plan for all the rest of the neighbors? Because the CCNRs would be modified, and the items could be outside of the building envelope then?
We would be, if we did, if we went down that road, we would be creating a different requirement for this lot that aren't imposed on the other lots. That's correct. And we have no control over the CCNRs.
No, no, I understand. I didn't mean the CCNRs. I meant the precise development plan.
Okay, yeah, that that was my first question that I inarticulate.
No, you were good.
Thank you.
You were good.
Any further questions? Yes.
No, I just have comments.
What?
I just have comments when it's time to comment as opposed to ask questions.
Well, I think then I should. We're all asking questions.
I know, I don't have any questions. I just have comments.
All right, so any comments or questions?
Yeah, my comment is that I I think it would be, while legally possible, I think it would be inappropriate for this council tonight, given the information that we have, to second guess the initial adoption conditions of the precise plan or to second guess our planning commission that voted unanimously to recommend that this envelope amendment occur and that the conditions that that they approved be approved by the council. You know, I hear the arguments being made by the applicant. I think, frankly, I think some of them are kind of a stretch. Basically, this is a reiteration of a condition that's existed since the precise plan was adopted. And for this council to tonight say, well, actually, we were just kidding. And in fact, you can build anything you want, as long as it's below a certain height outside the envelope, would be inappropriate, as I've said. So my recommendation is that we approve exactly what the planning commission sent to us, which is to approve the change of the envelope with the attendant conditions.
And is that a motion?
And that's a motion.
Is there any further comment? Is there a second? I will second the motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. We move now to any town council reports.
Good effort.
Town manager report?
Yeah, I have one.
Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, so I attended the the ranch board meeting. And I think there were a couple of items I wanted to just sort of report back to the group. I think I'm happy to report that Jessica Hodgkins is managing a very fiscally responsible organization. And they are deeply in the black and are actually planning some pretty great upgrades to their security system, I think, in partnership with with town hall. And those are very exciting. They walked us through their summer planning and and how the last year went. And I think it's, you know, as I've said before, it is a phenomenal organization serving the community, both in Tiburon and Belvedere and outside of of Tiburon and Belvedere. And they're doing a phenomenal job. So really short report, but very happy with with what the ranch is doing.
And thank you. It is a phenomenal organization. We don't hear enough about it. And just as long as we have an opportunity, I I would like to report my interest in occasionally hearing reports on the various committee and commissions we serve on as part of our town council meetings under town council reports. I think, A, people don't realize how much else we do. And B, they're unaware if they're not interested in what goes on that affects the town and other commissions and committees.
That's a great idea.
It's a great idea. All right, are we adjourned? We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.